PM. Thank you. This is the February 1st special meeting budget workshop, February 1st, 2022, special meeting of the Wellington Board of Education. It is 6:05 PM. As we call the meeting to order, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all join me, if you would, if you are on mute, take yourself off of mute. If you would like to join us in the stating of the Pledge of Allegiance for the recording. If not, it's just going to be me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Okay, there's a lot of background noise. We good? Okay. First off, on the agenda is the present to speak. Speakers will be recognized, and then if we ask only that you identify yourself by name and address, and that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. In total, we'll keep the comments to 20 minutes, but I don't think we have that many folks on the call right now. But if you would like to speak, please wave at the screen or take yourself off mute so that we can hear you. Okay, not seeing any public, any people from the public who wish to speak. We'll move on to item four, the review of programs previously presented and Board of Education discussion. Superintendent Stevens, I'm going to send it off to you.
Just gonna share my screen real quick. So let me share with you what went out with updated updated programs. It just, it didn't impact the budget at all. Donna had gone through a couple things and adjusted. So anything in green is updated. So you've got a copy today. So you have the most current items that are in there. I had pointed this out last time. Paraprofessionals, I said it was four. It was actually two. I said, had corrected that. We corrected some math there, but the totals were correct. And so this is just anything in green. I wanted to make sure it was clear. One thing in special ed program that I think it was actually Marsha McGinley that caught. We had put the same amount of money towards paraprofessionals, but what we had done is we had put too much money down in the purchase service and too little money in paraprofessionals up top. And we just reversed it to what it should be. We talked to Marsha about it. We talked to Donna about it, and it's now corrected. So again, the changes are there. No, no change on increase. It was just adjustment to numbers. And my dash is there. So that's just, so you had updated figures in the really prior year, but no impact at all on the change. The next thing I sent you today, you had asked about where the per pupil was. This came out of a question, I think, when, when we saw the overall budget. The data is up through 18, 19, 19, 20 is the last year we have. So this is our district reference group. We are in DIRTT E, and it shows where we are, where we fall in the list of people, where other people are. So this was 17, 18. We were at 19,227. 18, 19. 20,001, 24. And you have a copy of this in your email. And then 19, 20. This is where we were. 2021 has not been published. These come straight off of EdSite, and I, I shared the link with you in the document, the email that I sent today. Obviously, this shouldn't impact your, your budget questions, but it gives you a summary of kind of where we're at for per pupil because it comes up. The next thing that I shared, Donna had asked about contractual items, and I created this document with, really with Donald Tensic. She and I had a conversation about it, and the majority, this is like, it's well over 90% of the budget is contractual. So I did for each program and just said, it just commented what was contractual all the way through. Really, the only items that are not contractual are supplies, number one. And number two, where you're make, where we're making a recommendation for something like to purchase iReady is our assessment program. That's not a contract that we have to do. It's a recommendation from our administrative team. It's something that we believe is part of our comprehensive educational package, but it's not a requirement. So that, you could see that as contractual, but you could also see it as not contractual. But it's, it would be under purchase services. So just an example. So I tried to do that all the way through so you could see what those items were. And then the last thing, and I did not email this to you because it was just three pages, just going to click back, was you had asked about the percentage of students identified with special education needs. And instead, again, this, I went back three years. The latest they have is 19, 20. They do not have 2021 yet posted. The, in 17, 18, we were at 14.8%, students identified with special education needs. In 18, 19, EdSite has us at 15.2%. And in 19, 20, it was 17.7. And remember that we did that study with the independent study because we wanted to make sure we weren't over identifying. And they did say that we were not. So those are.
504s, Phil?
No, only special education. Only students that receive specialized instruction. So those are, I think, all of the questions from last time that I had. The majority of stuff, I don't think were impacting the, this budget, but just to give you a sense of where those things were, I wanted to make sure you had a copy of. Questions about those items? All right. Any questions about any of the prior programs?
I have one question, Phil. You and you were going through the, the special education program. Did that affect the totals, or was it just a shift between lines?
It was just a shift between lines, correct?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yep, total's the same. And right here. I think Donna has her hand up. It's on my screen.
Yep, Donna. You'll have to come off mute first, though.
Sorry, my mouse was difficult to find. Um, so I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but today the Cade Journal arrived, and right on the cover is malware and ransomware everywhere. I know professionally that that is a great concern in my industry. Um, I don't want to give evil people ideas, but you know, we have a lot of information about our students. And that kind of information, and I don't know what we have on our, on our staff and teachers, too. I mean, they're, they're employees. So we've got addresses and social security numbers and all sorts of stuff. I am very concerned that, one, if we don't have insurance, and we get attacked, that it could bankrupt the town. But when you'd also, when you have insurance for this kind of stuff, they also come in and tell you what you need to have in place to help protect, you know, your people. And I just, I don't want to see where we have a problem where we're hacked, our information is compromised, and now our students are, you know, 10 years down the road, they're having all sorts of identity issues because of something that happened while they were in our school system. And so I don't, I just, I'm concerned that this isn't given the priority that it needs to, because this could have a negative impact on anybody in our system for a really long time if something happens.
So the that's two parts. So one is, we have been attacked. Thankfully, I think if we did not have Novus, we would have been in big trouble. We're going to talk about them and Program 9 today. They just continue to just make huge strides for us in the area of technology. So one, that is important for us. They have, we've been working for months, and the town was in the same situation. We, nobody would cover a lot of districts because of two-factor authentication, which is like a double, double login. You know, you get, you log into your bank account on your computer, and you get a code sent to your text, a text message to your phone, and that's what you enter, and that's what allows you to log in. It's that type of system, and that's what we're moving towards. We need to do a project to be able to do that. And that project would create this, the two-factor authentication, and that's what would allow us to be insurable. So that's something that we're looking for towards summer, but they don't know the cost of that project yet, and what it's going to take, because it's, it's just not as easy as flipping a switch. So it's something that definitely, you know, if it's something that comes up, that's, you know, there's nonlapsing funds that are available. It would be something that I would recommend right away, but they need to have a plan first. There's a lot of things you can do for cybersecurity, but probably the largest is the, the insurance. And the, the town and the school district are separate in that situation. So we definitely need to, it's something we need to do in the future, for sure.
So we'll discuss that when we get to Program 9, and definitely something we should put on the agenda, on the regular agenda for a regular meeting later this year.
Yeah, and I can have Novus do a presentation on it.
Okay, that would be great. So then moving ahead, let's jump into the is it, is it specific to?
Well, it's part of the review of what we had before.
Okay, go ahead, Herb.
I'll try to be fairly brief, but I just want to say that the administration and superintendent had done a super job in putting the budget together. And I'm pretty pleased with almost all of it. There are some areas that I have concerns about, but I think that what has been presented will provide students with a solid program of services and provide for the needs in, in many areas. But as I mentioned the last time, the curriculum development, I haven't seen a curriculum for the longest time, in spite of the fact that I've asked for the curriculum that we're using now. I know we're, we're in the process of developing a curriculum, and, and I'm sure we'll get very good results of that. But I don't see any expansion of the curriculum offerings in this budget. And I mentioned this the last time, and like enrichment courses or creative things, et cetera. And I know that clubs were mentioned, and, but I haven't really seen anything concrete. So that and also, I had concerns about maintaining essential class time for some of the basic education courses that we have, like English and science and math, languages, safety, health, and things of that kind. And we only have a few extracurricular areas and clubs and the sports compared with other schools. And I was hoping for some possible extension, of course, offerings, or at least some indication that, that this will, would be occurring. So we have some students have an experience in, in the creative areas and things that they can excel in. And the other factor, too, when I thought about this, we're losing class time for students. I know that the superintendent mentioned we get a thousand hours or 900 hours, and it dropped back 100 or 200 hours of actual class time because of the professional development. But between the SEL and half-days for professional development, et cetera, our calendar for 2021, 22, and 2022, 23, has the number of full days, if you look at the calendar, the number of full days per week. The number of full days for students for educational purposes for a full week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I don't think you'll find very many days in there. When I look at that, I see students losing out on class time. And I was in the classroom dealing with their English and math and sciences and things of that kind. And it is cutting into the time, students' time on task. And I don't think anyone can deny that. The other question I have is in regard to the Connecticut SED IEP staff training. I was wondering whether the staff training will be a part of that half-day, or whether they'll be working on curriculum and getting half-days for that in servicing and training for that new special ed program. I really not too clear on that at the present time. But again, I want to say that the administration and superintendent, I know they've put a lot of work in on this budget. And any questions that, that we have, or just to clarify in our minds, you know, where are we going and, and how we feel about it? The other point, too, that I want to ask is in regard to the increase, increases, something like 349,009, 42. Is that one mil increase in the town budget, or is it a half a mil? I've forgotten exactly how much makes up a mil, but I'm sure we can get that information fairly easily. And also, I was wondering whether the Board of Finance has been notified regarding the 3.9% increase that we have on the books at the present time.
Okay, Herb, that was about five questions at once. I'm going to do my best to go through them. Certainly, we're about to start on Section 6, which is the curriculum and thus the training. So we'll get to that question in a moment here. The question regarding the mil increase is that the mil rate is set by the Board of Finance after they figured out what all the rest of the budget pieces are. So for us, our budget is not directly related to a mil increase or decrease. That's related to the entire town's budget, and also has to include what comes in from Region 19, et cetera. So for us, this information that was presented to us last week is available, was available online. Members of the Board of Finance have looked at it. Maybe not all of them yet. We are presenting to the Board of Finance after we vote on a budget in early February, early February or late February? Late February. So they'll have another month to look at this whenever we come up with as our final budget in detail. They will have a couple of weeks before we present it, and then further discussions as always. So your questions specifically about the amount of time towards the schedule are not budget-related, and I think we're related to our conversations for professional development. So I'd like to hold the specific questions about how many hours a day that we're not proposing any significant changing to the learning day or to the program in this budget. Is that correct, Phil? So the questions that you have regarding specific time, et cetera, we can answer at a different meeting rather than this budget. But know that there's not anything significantly different in this budget from what we've been doing in past years. Did I miss anything?
As far as that, the 349, 349,000, I know that, I know the Finance Board figures out the budget and, and works, you know, the mil rate and all that. But there's no question that, that amount of money is going to affect the, the middle rate one way or the other.
Right, but we can't tell what that is. If, if Region 19 comes in significantly less than that, the budget could go down. We're only responsible for our piece of the budget. We cannot know what impact it will have on the mil rate.
But when the Board of Finance looks at this, they're going to look at it as a from their point of view, and 349,000 is going to be a, a middle rate. And, and even though they deal with the entire budget, they, they're going to have to work this in somehow.
They're going to have to look at this as a part of the whole. That is correct. And then they'll decide what they can apply from grants and other things, and where they're going to raise the money from. And some of that will be related to taxes, because that's where in Connecticut, most of education budgets are paid for is out of, out of local taxes. But to what degree this input is, is we can't say what percentage that would translate to as a mil increase.
And part of my question was, has the Board of Finance contacted the Board of Education or the superintendent concerning what they, what their expectations are this year?
They sent a general letter, I think. I don't even remember seeing it, but I think.
I believe, I believe that they sent something out around Christmas earlier this year. It wasn't, wasn't in the past week. It was much earlier. But it was not, it did not have specific guidance about, you know, we ask you to keep within X percent. It was more generic.
Herb, your question about enhanced courses. Typically, people, you have to add staff to add courses. One thing I think the middle school has done to try and be creative, and MK, I'm going to put you on the spot in a second, is to have a STEAM block, which STEAM is another educational acronym, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. And within that STEAM block, teachers, our current teachers have different things that they're teaching. And so it's a way to provide additional courses without adding staff. MK, you want to talk about some of this, what courses are offered as part of STEAM?
Sure. Um, you know, with the small staff such as we have, it is really difficult to do those major extensions without doing incredible changes to the schedule. So we do have the STEAM block, which, which is not an extracurricular, but it's an extension of the, and then, and elongation of the thoughts that are involved in the content areas. So, you know, we have photography, we have robotics. There is a household finance and management class that extends, you know, gives students a chance to do budgeting and, you know, taxes and all those things. There's classes on, we have a newspaper, so they learn journalism. So we have all, there's brain games, there's coding. So we take those classes and we extend them. We also have something called the WIN block, which stands for what I need. And that's where we provide students who need it targeted intervention to get their skills up to where they need to be. And also, we, we offer enrichment and extension on, for students who are beyond the grade level and who are excelling. So we, we try to meet kids where they are, move them forward, and we try to also take into account the varying interests that students have.
Yeah, I understand that, you know, we are doing a lot in that area, and we have a lot of process. There's a question about it. We're doing really a pretty excellent job. But I still look at it to some extent from the test scores. I mean, we, we say we're doing a good job, and I think we are. I think we have excellent staff, and everything is there, but with a little more in the area of cultural and exploratory and things like that, maybe our test scores would improve. Otherwise, our, our test scores are either going to stay with the way they are, or they're going to go down. I want to see, I want to see.
You're going to hear that from Aaron today in Program 6. We'll talk about, I mean, you've heard some of that already with, with professional development and curriculum development. You're going to hear that in this, this program. I think the other question that you asked about that, that special ed training, the new program, the state sets those dates when they're going to do those programs. And I believe that Marsha couldn't be here tonight, but I believe there's some training that's occurring this summer that the state is trying to pay for, for free, and also pay our staff to be there, because they understand that it's, you know, an added cost to our district. So it's whenever they're providing it is, is what I believe when we're going to have to do it. I'm sure they're going to give us some options, but there, that's part of the state rollout, is their, their plan for professional development.
It'd be interesting to find out what some of those pilot towns did in regard to this, Phil, too, I think.
Yeah.
How they handle it.
Okay, so let's move into more detail on Program 6.
So this, this program has a slight decrease. We have funds from grants that are offsetting professional development, and that includes paraprofessional. See, if you just go through, this is, it's pretty flat. The team leader stipends, that's any of the people that have, you know, if you're a team leader, or there's all sorts of stipends in the back of the contract, we, we fill those. And so anywhere we fill them, it costs money. There's a dollar amount that goes with it. Outside conferences, it's contractual as well. They get a certain amount of number of days and money. And to be honest with you, they don't use it all. So we don't budget as much as we should if everyone was going to use it. But we have other monies that, you know, through the grant that could cover that. Teacher workshops in-house supports, you know, anytime we need to pay for subs or, or bring people in and do things in our buildings, that's what that money is for. There's contractual money for paraprofessionals for workshops. I reduced it to $1,000 because it's not been used greatly. And I will tell you that when we went remote in, in March, that Marsha McGinley, People's Services Director, she actually found a website that we basically paid a subscription to, and they could pick a whole host of different professional developments to go through. And that was one of our requirements. It's one of the reasons we kept our paraprofessionals on when other districts said, we can't pay you, you're not working. We used that time for, for training. And so we'll continue to do that, but there's money for professional development. It doesn't have to be out of that line. And then there's a professional development committee. They have some funds. So this could be used as we move forward. We had our first portrait of the graduate, big move, I will say, last meeting, where we started, we have our, our, we started working on indicators, which means we have our adjectives of what we want our students to be able to represent when they leave us. But we started working through indicators, and we got through one set. And so that some of this money could be used next year towards continuing that work with the company we're currently working with. So you can see there's a slight decrease in the overall subtotal. And then I decreased the workshop supplies to $500. I look at the end of the year to see what's been used. The last couple of years, it's not been used. Might be because of COVID, but I know that I also put some money into grants for the curriculum director, Aaron. And so that was, she's got some supply money in her budget that's there. And so you see the grant offset. It's this 12, 709 is what we had this year. We only got 9,354 for, to apply. So we use some of the ARPAS or money to keep the same offset as what we had this current year. So the total's down. It's down, you know, $1,500 or so. Aaron, you want to speak to just, you know, some of the work that we're doing? I know we've, we've talked about this a bunch, but just to this program about the funds that are needed and why they're needed, why the, you need the trainers to come in and why you can't do it all?
Sure. And I do know that, you know, as we're speaking to this, some of the work we're doing around the curriculum also were built into Programs 1 and 2. So just, you know, note, remember that a lot of the supplies, that some of the curriculum were worked into those lines. And this really is a lot of the developed professional development. But the, the why behind this is, again, as you know, we're Uh but the the why behind this is, again, as you know, we're a lot of curriculum development is happening. Um ELA really prioritized for this year, math for next year, um science kind of crossing between the the two years. Um and then perfect project-based learning really as we're as we're moving towards the third year. And in or as we make these shifts, and you guys have heard this, a lot, there's a lot of pedagogical science uh really turns to three dimensions and inquiry-based learning, math really shifts to more inquiry-based learning. Um really kind of those pedag- pedagogical shifts. Uh so we really want to roll these and implement them very well and strategically and intentionally. That really takes the the role of a coach um and it kind of the boots on the ground. So there's that initial rollout where you roll out the program, kind of more that direct instruction. This is what it is. This is how you read it. And then there's the implementation phase, which is where that boots on the ground person, really their coaching, you know, we have uh Kristen for ELA where she works alongside the teachers. She can video them and really do that, the process and reflective activities with them afterwards to build their capacity and understanding uh to really grow, you know, grow as professionals. And then there's the revision process, right? So let's reflect on how they went and then revise curriculum based on based on our living it. Um and then again, using bringing the assessments to into. All of that takes time. And as you guys know, I have three years to write every curriculum. So I'm pretty much behind the computer screen twenty-four seven. And so I'm not able to be that boots on the ground uh really uh that in the moment, let's look at how this is working. Let's reflect on it, really helping teachers shift the pedagogy. Um really, and again, they're in some phenomenal, we've had some great feedback around letters um from teachers recently. And you know, they they're actually at the point where they're like, where's the time? Not, we really want to do this. Give us the time. Uh and so that's really exciting, but we also know that the implementation of their learning is that application is the most important part. So we want to make sure we can really support them in that application phase. And so I know for math, we talked about um, we're going to be using crack utilizing, hopefully utilizing crack reas- as a resource for the rollout with uh that implementation rollout and with the coach with the boots on the ground. Um for science, we're building the capacity, and I guess you guys know that's really my background. So I'm really building the capacity with the science teachers and utilizing our science uh really building her capacity as a leader and built in utilizing the in-house resources for science. And then for ELA, we have Kristen um and myself are pretty much rolling out the ELA uh the ELA and utilizing Kristen as a coach for ELA. And then uh next year, project-based learning, we'll talk a little bit more next year.
And that's, I I think what you're sharing is the balance, and I think that's the really the point of this, is that to to roll out the curriculum properly, you need the training. This is the training portion of it right here. Um and so without these funds, uh this is where, you know, we ask everybody to wear forty-five hats. And, you know, Aaron's been pretty upfront as far as I can write all this, but we're going to have to provide some training around it as well to make sure it's effective. So. Any other comments that that Aaron, I didn't want to cut you off, sorry.
No, that's okay. You're much more succinct.
Any questions about program six here?
I'm not seeing any hands. We can move on to program, the next program.
All right, this is purely contractual here. Program seven is utilities. You can see the killer. It it just jumps off the page in heating oil. So right now, typically by now, we've locked in. We lock in our heating and fuel rates every year. We've not locked in yet um because we're hoping it's going to come down. I talked to Donna pretty regularly about this. So does Erica, as as her select woman. Um right now, it was like, it was over two sixty, two seventy. Uh they weren't the same prices. They're usually the same price today. They were not. Um but the report we got today was um they're expecting they're going to have more sup- uh supply, uh which means prices would come down. And so the report we saw, so we are budgeting uh at two fifty a gallon. Um and that brings us to eighty-seven five. We're hoping that it goes below that um and we'll see some savings in this. But as soon, I'll be honest with you, we've been watching this for a while, and as soon as it hits two fifty, we're probably just going to lock in because we don't want to get stuck in a yo-yo of back and forth. Um so we watch this regularly. Our our provider actually sends us reports. Um so we know where it's where the the amounts are at. But you can see heating well is um. We had a dream this year that fifty thousand was a dream because we locked in it like, you know, that one sixty-three, one sixty-four. That's uh that's dreamland. I wish we could have done that for multiple years. Um we actually asked and they said, no. But that's the big thing that jumps off the page right here. These are contractual rates for water, electricity um and heating well. The um the probably the 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 struggle I have every year is seeing this energy performance contract lease payment come up. Um it's frustrating. This was uh something that was done uh about ten years ago. They they put in um new uh air-blown insulation in, they sealed doors, they did a bunch of different um savings, energy savings, projects, new lights. Um and the savings was supposed to pay off the amount of money that it was going to cost for this total program. Well, you're paying for the program for seventeen years and um twenty-two, twenty-three is year nine. So you're going to continue to pay this for a while. I a couple, I think my first year in CIP, I asked if they would consider just paying this off. So well, it wasn't in our operating budget. Um and they declined. So it's something that's there every year. It's around that, you know, it it goes up slightly each year. Um but we're only in year nine of seventeen. And I I say it's frustrating because technology moves so fast. The lighting that was put in is already out of date. If we can replace a bulb now with an LED, it's going to last significantly longer than what they had had provided with us with us. Um and those lights were free for a period of time and we are out of that window. So now we have to pay for our our light bulb, so. There's a prime example of out of your control. Um you just kind of cut the check and wish you didn't have to. Pretty straightforward program. Any any comments about utilities?
Uh Phil, on the uh energy electric bill, is that locked in?
Yes, it's a multi-year contract. Um it went up January of this year, just just last month. Um and so we go up to the eight point eight nine now. And so it's locked in. I think it's five years, sir, but I can find out.
That's good.
Any other questions on utilities? Okay, moving on to program eight.
Okay, program eight's a little bit longer. Um so this program, it it contains the the funding for the custodial and and maintenance program um for both center and hall. It's separated out. One of the HMS secretaries is coded to this program, which is what you see there, that point one five. It's just a portion of his job. Uh we have one maintenance custodian at center and one maintenance custodian at hall. That was, we did that, we pay them a stipend, and we did that so we didn't have to have um, we used to have a full-time district uh maintenance custodian. Um and instead of doing that, we 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 pay those individuals a stipend. We have two custodians who clean hall school at night and one at center school. Um they clean in the evening, so they're the, you know, three to midnight shift or two to two to eleven, whatever their shift is, two to ten. Um the salary section is contractual. You can see the what's in there for W E S S. It's that, that's the union. So you can see that salaries, the property insurance that's there, it went up slightly. Um again, you have to have it. I'll tell you that you'll be getting a report from me on the flood and the dollars it's going to cost for uh the center school project. Uh you'll hear more about that on Tuesday at our regular meeting. Um so the insurance is is critical. You have to have it. I increased the custodial supplies. We've seen um some of the prices go up on certain things. Um I think that's everywhere and so some of the things actually are harder to get. So sometimes we're buying more because, you know, when it takes four months to get something, that's really hard when you're running a school and you need whatever it is. Um so I did increase it a thousand dollars and I increased the travel reimbursement to four hundred. Um they get paid when they go to the hardware store, they get paid IRS mileage. And one of the reasons I increased that is, you know, when they have a a to get gas for a snow blower or they have a a broken part, they got to go and get it. Um and I have, that's a a line I watch and I obviously sign off for travel reimbursement. And and we we continually go over that two hundred dollar um amount, so I increased it to four hundred um because I want them to be able to go get items when they need them. Um it it's it's critical. So there's a a slight increase in this program um of about eight thousand dollars.
Are there any questions? Okay, I am not seeing anyone's hands. Okay, program nine.
All right, program nine. So this is a, this has a variety of of items uh need to operate a school district. Um and that's why it's under system-wide support. It includes IT services, uh magnet school tuition, legal fees, school security items. Um you can see a portion of my administrative assistant is tied to transportation. She helps do a lot of the root work. So that's why she's point eight five here. The other one point or point one five of her is in transportation. We broke out the um purchase service section um pretty specifically, just so it's clear, because this is something when I came in. Um I I wanted to clear up, there's so many purchase services and it's a lot to track, and we want to make sure it's accurate. And there's um, this is a prime example of why. So magnet school tuition is down slightly. We're expecting next year. Um those are the folks that, you know, choose to to go out. The tuition per student typically um without special education needs is around five thousand dollars per student. Um and and you're obligated to pay that. Again, we have several people that have never been in the Wellington Public Schools. They might have moved to Wellington, but they've always been in a magnet school. Um the second thing that's on here is is the uh teach teacher retirement valuation. It's mandated. This is actually, it's a an actuarial value valuation. Um it's a firm in liability for um of having retired teachers stay on the active teacher genetic care insurance policy. Um it it's it's not really like a retirement fund. It's just to constantly evaluate it. So the full of the full valuation is every two years. Um and it was, it was actually, it's mandatory this year. Um and and Donna didn't realize that, so the funds are there. It's going to be paid for. It'll come out of this year. And then there's a disclosure every other year, the seventeen hundred dollars. So we have, this is a good example of, we have a spreadsheet now. This is on it. We know what years it should be in it. Um and we can adjust based upon where we're at. So we paid for a full um valuation in nineteen twenty. And so should have had one in this this fiscal year. We did not. But it's there now. Legal fees, I'm going to keep flat at ten. Um we still have some funds in our retainer. Um there's about six thousand dollars in the retainer. And so I don't see a need. We're going to have some negotiations coming up. Um so that six thousand dollar retainer will decrease some. Um obviously depends on how the negotiations go. If they're longer, uh it costs more money. If it's shorter, there's, there will be some money left in the retainer. So I think that ten thousand's a decent number. Um you can see the copier lease is really inexpensive in my office. Um that is my office, and the reason why is we bought that unit. Um we've been using uh that unit for a couple of years now and it's working for us. So uh as long as I'm going to knock on wood here, you can't see me, but I'm knocking on wood. As long as that continues, um we'll keep that going. Um IT, this went down um some because we paid for, we paid for multiple years of uh Microsoft licenses licensing. It was a better deal to do a multi-deal, multi-year deal. We did that. Um and so it's down for next year. The following year, it will come back up. Um IT services there, that's Novus. I will tell you, I I can't speak you know, highly enough of what what we've gotten out of them. We pay, I think, forty-eight percent and the board um the pound pays fifty-two percent. This is just our portion. But, you know, you have to remember, uh, you know, one person with benefits is a hundred thousand dollars if they're qualified. Um and then you only have one person. We have an army in the IT support from Novus. Um you know, just the hack that came uh last December. If we had not had them here, we would have been in big trouble. Um they're worth every penny. Um and so that's that is representative of their slight increase. Uh there's a slight increase in Messenger. Um we discovered this today. I asked about this again. This is actually um something that we will decrease um because we talked about Power School being cheaper and um there was, it it's going to come down to twenty-seven hundred. So that's going to be something I'm going to be documenting and changing on the overall budget. Because it was, it was double booked. I ready. Um this is in uh Aaron Conley uh giving us direction on on um what to do with I ready. I ready. And Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't want to say the wrong thing. Um it's the toolbox. I ready toolbox is the name of it. The, can you just ta- talk real quickly about what the toolbox is for me, please?
So so the toolbox is a kind of an extension of the I ready assessment platform. Um assessment platform allows you to go deep diagnostically to find out the very discrete skills that the kids are missing um and or excel in. And then what the toolbox does is it provides res- resources for teachers with simple links. So let's say in math, they're struggling with single-digit addition. It it'll show that in I ready and you can click the link and it'll bring you to the toolbox, which then shows you as a teacher what what to do to help them. So it gives you lessons you can do. It provides links to online programming that will build their um understanding of single-digit. So it really provides the teacher with that resource they need to address those skills that the I ready assessment tells us.
So that increase there is actually offset through my REAP grant, the REAP grant here. So I I put a six thousand dollar offset. That's the difference between uh the two. Um Raptors in there again, we'll we'll probably add that at the end of this year. Now that we're allowing people back in our building, we've kind of held off because of COVID. Um that's the the scanner. You scan your license when you come in. Um we, the telephone services is basically flat. Internet service went up a little bit um because we increased our bandwidth um across all three buildings. Um this is after E-rate. Again, we get about, I think it's twenty-three thousand dollars worth of service for about nine. Um a little over nine, maybe ten. Um and so this increases our bandwidth again with a one-to-one um student iPad or um Chromebook initiative. You have to make sure you have great infrastructure. That allows it to happen. You see postage is flat. Um the the board clerk is there. The these, all all these other items are flat. They're they, we've been consistent with what we spend and how we spend it. The E-rate consulting is something that, um again, the spreadsheet that we've created, we E-rate is um years ago, Brenda had gone to, I think it was Washington, to try to be trained in E-rate. And it is uh uh one of those governmental, uh if you don't do this every day, it is a significant challenge for someone being trained on it to be to do. And what ended up happening was um we found someone through a consulting firm that could do the work for us. Um and it actually probably saves us money because if we were doing it ourselves, it would cost way more hours for us to do it and would cost a fortune and wouldn't be worth it. And those E-rate con- con uh the consultation that we get from them, um they actually make sure, so our E-rate for our internet, they are um overseeing our wireless infrastructure upgrades. They tell us how much money we have access to. They make sure they were spending on the right things. They do all our paperwork paperwork for it. Um it it's actually really critical to get all those funds um because I just, it it's one of those that has a lot of I's and a lot of T's to cross to make sure you do it right. And if you don't do it right, you don't get the money. So um that's in there. So there's an increase overall in that, the purchase services. Um I drop supplies a little bit for Board of Ed and my office. Uh we tend to do a lot more things electronically um for now, and and I'm I'm confident where that's at. And then the other dues and fees that are on here um are are there. It's, some of these are contractual when in my contract. Um I don't get paid travel unless I go out of district. So when you go see me go to center school or to hall school, I don't get paid travel for that. Um it's only out of district. Um the one thing that I will say on there, and this is if you're looking to um Um, the one thing that I will say on there, and this is if you're looking to um, cut a little bit of money. Um, is part of that. I think it's this uh dues superintendent. I've got a wicked echo all of a sudden. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Part of the dues under superintendent um was Nesdeck. And that's the company that. They'll do searches and stuff and they'll send out searches. And to be quite honest, it's kind of weird. Because it's like searches like, hey, we're looking for a superintendent. Do you want to apply? I, I think that's strange. Um, the one thing they do for free. Is they provide um enrollment study every year. It's nothing like Peter Prouder provides. Um, but it is, um, it is. Pretty simple and straightforward, just numbers. And to be honest, we give them the data. So it's kind of weird that they. They do a, a projection for us. It's, I don't know. So if you're gonna cut some money, I could find out what that cost is. We were talking about it today, going back and forth. I think it's around 1,200. We just had an enrollment study done by Prouder for the school building committee. I'm not so sure you would need to keep that in there and that would be something that, you know. To reduce. That'd be up to you. Um, that's basically it for Program Nine. Any, any? Questions?
There's a lot of, a lot that's in there. There were a few that were significantly different. Some of them that were pretty substantially the same. Thank you. I was just about to ask you to.
Yep.
Phil, on all of these items that we have listed here. And uh, I don't want to micromanage or anything, but under any. Do you have another set of books where you, you have a list of what's in each one of these? Areas?
Yes, and that's what the spreadsheet is. So I mean, some, some.
Flat number at the right. But within that category. Do you, you have a list of items that are listed to come up with a total?
Oh, absolutely. So really where it, where you would see it, Herb, in my spreadsheet, anywhere it's broken out. Like this right here, IT, Microsoft licenses, security certificates. There's probably five cer- security certificates that we pay for and that's what's in our spreadsheet. And in our spreadsheet, it basically names what the security certificate is, what it's used for. How long it, we have it for, what the cost was and how much, you know, it was prior year in the account we've used to pay for it. If it says something specific like IT support Novus, that's their bill. That's the entire amount right there. So really, when you look at um, this one here, has several things in it. That's on my spreadsheet. This one here has several things in it. Power School has several things in it. I ready is only two, but they both go to I ready. Um, so the, the rest of them are, are, are solo items. There's not like a breakdown. The board clerk is the person who does your minutes. It's just a, you know, a hundred dollars per meeting is basically what it is.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. So moving on to Program Ten, fringe benefit substitutes.
Donna's got her hand up, Michelle.
Oh, there you go. Donna, go ahead.
All right, and I apologize for the background noise. We just sent something with a pressure. Um. On, Phil, on stuff that you said we can reduce, just reduce it. I mean, if, if it's. If it's, if it's what I call low-hanging fruit and it's really easy to get rid of it and it's not gonna have a negative impact, then we should get rid of it. Because there's other areas that are going up that we don't have any control over. Um, whether it's contractual or something like the full um fuel.
Yeah, uh, when I had done this and, and we had, we typically leave our spreadsheet, those items, and I just sent the spreadsheet to Donna and she inserts the total numbers. Um, and, and then the SBC had their, their product study done. So that's why I bring it up tonight. I mean, I, I'm. I'm gonna be transparent about that. It's something I don't think, unless you feel like you need it in there, I, I don't see. Great value to my, for my staff. Um, connecting with Nesdeck. Uh, Aaron, I, I'm gonna ask you. In your other district, uh, did you connect with Nesdeck at all or, or you do anything with them?
No, we didn't, actually.
Okay. So I mean, I would just say, you know, that's something that I can get the amount and just remove it and update the sheet if everyone's okay with that. I saw Ann nod her head.
Well, I think if that's the only number, we're gonna actually have the discussion next week. So if there's any additional changes, you can certainly make those at that point. You need to know what that amount is because you're not exactly sure what the exact number is. So just bring that number with us to the meeting. And there may be other adjustments we make at the same time. So don't bother giving us a whole nother set of spreadsheets for one number that's different.
Yeah. If you're gonna go through a bunch, remember that I don't, it's really hard. And this is gonna be a question for tonight. Do you need, you need to figure out if you need that extra meeting? Because to do it live. Whatever you approve is what you approve. And so, you know, it's one of those things I would ask Donna and Tinsic and I, she sit down, we check all the numbers. So if you have changes or adjustments you want, it's easier for us to do them ahead of time. Um, if it's something you want done, so just. Good for thought. Program Ten?
Program Ten.
All right. So this is one big contractual program. Um. Basically, this is the um. This is the subs, is you have the long-term sub. You put this placeholder uh in and starting in 2021 and I'm glad you did because it's been used every year. Um, this is where, you know, someone goes out on maternity. And we're paying uh, you know, bachelor step one, which is $250 a day. Um, which is, you know, half of what we pay is subpay. So th-this is really critical to maintain because you don't have that money elsewhere. Um, the substitute teachers is both schools. Um, and there's a line here for substitute pairs. I decreased this to $1,000. Um, because one, one, I looked at the total amount. We were using subs for pairs. Um, and, and it, it was covered between the special ed costs and this. Uh, and I felt like you shouldn't, we should never budget more than we need. And so, looking at the history of this. I'm confident with that 1,000 where it's at. Um, and, and one of those reasons why, and this is our staff, I gotta give kudos to our staff. If we have a paraprofessional who's working one-to-one with a student, they have a very specific program. Um, and it's very hard to bring in a substitute para. And have them then try and implement that program. Oftentimes, we don't do that. What our staff does is the special education teacher adjusts their schedule that day to make sure that they can cover. Um, that student, or we adjust where if there's a student with a one-to-one paraprofessional. A one person in the morning and one person in the afternoon. That person who's out is obviously out. The, the other person, it's the half-day, stays, stays with them all day long. So it's, it's one of the reasons I just didn't want you to think like, hey, what's, what, what's the story with this? Um, we're looking at the history of it. Um, and what our staff does to, um, just to make sure we have good program, programming for our students. Um. Medical insurance, I told you, was a 0% increase. We're, we're still working on signing that off. It doesn't look like a zero though. Uh, and, but it is. It is not going up. The cost is not going up. What happens here is um, that number in the middle, the 1,168,000. Is what we have for this year, budgeted. But if somebody comes in and we hire people this year and they say, I need insurance and the person that left. Did not, we need to provide them insurance. So basically, there's a 0% increase insurance. They're not, the kinetic care is not giving us an increase, but more people are taking insurance. And that's the difference you see right there, 132,000, something like that. Um, dental insurance at this point, we're still negotiating. It's not gonna increase more than 5%. This was 6%, and it was then hot off the press, um, before it went to you that day. It went down to 5%. Life insurance is um, it's close. It's, there's a slight increase. Unemployment, we left flat. Um, karma, we went, we left flat um, for the workers comp there. Um, and then the social security Medicare is, is fact, figured out by our staffing. And so that's, it's calculated in. Um, and then we did not, we sent out a survey for tuition reimbursement. This is a contractual item. Um, and we didn't get, um, there was only one response. So we leave it as one response. And there's the, the money there to basically cover up to um, a certain amount. And then the cl- tax sheltered annuity is also, it's in the classified contract WESSS. That is contractual as well. They get a certain percentage uh put into their um tax sheltered annuity. And that covers that amount. So you can see that there's a slight grant offset by S R two. Um, and the, our S R grants to cover that. And to be quite honest, that is insurance. That's covering insurance um, for Aaron. And it's also covering. Um, the 50,000 here. Hmm. Is, I think it's covering um, sub, but I want to confirm that. I didn't look at that note. I'm gonna check on, with Donna on that one because I want to make sure I remember what that's. Might have it right in front of me. Oh, you know what it is? It's um, it's insurance for Aaron and then insurance for utility staff. That's exactly. Sorry, just need to sharpen my brain there for a moment. So it offsets, again, those folks are 100% grant funded. Questions about Program Ten?
Uh, the one question I have in terms of substitutes is how are we doing in terms of getting substitutes? I realize there's a bit of a crisis in terms of staffing. Is that enough money to meet the current need? Or are we struggling?
I think everybody's struggling, but I, I think we've been, uh, honestly, I think we're doing better than a lot of other districts. Um, we've been covering things. And again, our, our staff is creative. They cover where they can. Um, the utility staff has been very beneficial in that. Um, they cover wherever they can and, and help out. And that's why they're in the budget for next year. We continue to recruit. Um, I have a meeting, um, or I just had a meeting with uh, us, uh. Uh, she's a fifth-year senior at UConn. She's uh, looking for places to sub when she doesn't have classes. She's in her internship year. And her internship isn't every day. So she's able to come and sub a couple of days a week, close to UConn. So those are, you know, I try and get the, you know, when I connect with someone like that. Um, we try and say, hey, do you have any other friends in the education department? Because maybe we can add more days. Sometimes our subs are, hey, I can only sub Monday and Tuesday. That's it. Um, but I, I'll be honest, some of our subs have filled longer positions um, to help us out. Art, health, um, they are saving us in those positions that we've just struggled to fill. Um, with no applications coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Sorry, okay, so.
Donna has her hand up.
Sorry.
Um, so based upon what you said, Phil. I think that there's, were three changes you mentioned. Page 21, that the power school would go down to 2,700. Page 22, that there would be a, a decrease. On the due superintendent line by whatever that Nesdeck amount is, which you, which. For some reason, I wrote down 1,200, but I, um. That may not be the right amount. And then on page 23. The dental insurance, instead of it being a 6% increase, it would be adjusted to the 5% increase.
That's already reflected. That one's very reflective.
Oh, it's already reflected in the, um, in that number?
Yeah.
Okay, so then.
That day, that was the day we sent this out. We did, we made the adjustment that day.
Okay, so then the only thing you need to do is at the bottom of that page, where it says the dental is budgeted for a 6% increase? Okay, I'm going by my, perfect, thank you.
You're very welcome. And I hope by next, you know, we, we continue to press them and, and our, um, the folks that do our, our negotiations for us around insurance. Are, are really good. Um, and so if they tell us, say, it's not gonna be higher than three at this point in time, then we'll decrease it by that amount. We'll continue to go, bring that, that dollar amount down.
Okay, so that finishes the presentation of the different sections. Are there any additional questions? Based on what we saw today, what we saw last week, the total number. Questions that we have or changes that we want Phil to come back for sure with information on one piece or another. Remember, we want to vote on our next Tuesday at our regular meeting so that we can move forward. With um, the presentation to the Board of Finance. So are there any questions or issues? Any? Tracy, go ahead.
So I have a question before I make a comment. Uh, if, depending on Phil's answer. Um, so there was a. A comment last week about um. Our proposal to reduce our third grade team by one teacher. To make it into two section, two groups of students instead of three. So my question, Phil, is um, if that were to happen. That would be reducing our staff by one. So someone would be, be let go.
That is correct.
Okay, so, um. Just my opinion, but in my opinion, when we're implementing a new curriculum. And we're investing a lot of time and resources to provide professional development this year. Already, and continuing for the rest of the year. Um, most in time and resources. Uh, I do not think it's a very good idea to be reducing the number of classroom teachers. Because we're wasting resources that we've already spent. And. In the situation where they're talking on the news about teachers who are walking away and going to jobs. Out of education. For whatever reason. We don't want to lose the good teachers that we have and then be in a situation where many districts are right now where. They need more teachers and they can't hire them because they can't find anybody qualified or someone that will accept the position. With the budget that is being provided for the salaries in that district. And it's, it's real because I'm living it in a district that I work in right now. So I don't think that we should be doing that with, you know, when we already have quality teachers in our schools. Because that's the other thing. If you don't keep what you have that's quality, you don't know what the quality could be that's coming. Um. And we just have to possibly, if population numbers went up, hire someone else and retrain them. A whole year of what all our teachers have just been trained in. Or, and uh, learned the new parts of curriculum. Uh, another piece to that is with a new curriculum and different pedagogy, as Aaron spoke of at the beginning. Um, it would be easier to implement a new, new curriculum and have perhaps be more effective. To begin with, with smaller class sizes than larger class sizes that they're not used to teaching. And the third part of that is that smaller class sizes have been a priority of our families in surveys that we've had in the past. So those are my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Others who have a question or a comment to make at this time?
Comment.
Herb?
On, in special education. A lot of things in this area, we don't have control over, I guess it's. I E Ps are involved in all kinds of technical things, which I really don't know too much about. Not being a special ed. Uh, teacher. But in uh. The behavioral consultant, I mentioned this last time, is there any opportunity to uh. Reduce that particular account? It's about 35,000. I don't know whether we've used all of that money in the course of the year or not. Um, and the other is, is there any opportunity of uh, reducing. The 400 or 500,000 dollars for uh. Outplacement. I think, I think that's what it is. I think I think that's what it is. Tuition outplacement. This may be a result of I E Ps, I don't know, but is there any? I mean, it seems to me if we have two or three out placements now and it's costing us. Almost four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, that would be an area we could. Uh reduce and do it. Take care of the students internally.
So typically, the services that are provided in an out placement facility are very, very different. Than what's provided in public setting. We provide everything we can before a student is is goes out to an outplacement facility. I will tell you that, and I'm gonna share my screen again because I think this is important for the board to understand. When you look at program three here. When people talk about transparency, all right, and this is, this is how I have always built my budgets. That first line grant offset excess cost. You will not see that line as an offset in a lot of budgets. And the reason why is that one right there is because it's money coming back. That's the the if you take the per pupil expenditure, anything or that's over four and a half times. Your per pupil expenditure, you get typically about seventy percent back. It's supposed to be a hundred percent, but it's typically been around seventy percent. Most superintendents do not build that into their budgets and it's their special ed pad. It's basically if there's something. Very professional, that's there. The one fifty one, the other thing people will do is is, and we did this in our first year here, you can see. We put a hundred thousand as an estimate that first year. Um I think we got a little bit more than that. This year, we're applying every dollar that we believe we're gonna get back. In excess cost. There's a bit of risk to that. And because if it doesn't come back, it's still, if the student leaves, obviously, it's still an offset in the budget, so. You just have to be careful, even though you wouldn't have to pay the the cost. So yes, Herb, it is the most expensive. It is directly linked to a student's individualized individualized education plan or I E P. And it's made it with a decision with the, you know, the parents, the teachers. If it's an outplacement, the facility, if if we were looking to outplace a student. Um we said, hey, we like this facility and it's inexpensive. That facility has to accept that child in and it has to be an appropriate facility for that student. We can't just go, that's the cheapest, that's where you're going. It doesn't work that way. So this is an area to bring those students back. You're probably looking at, and and I mean, Brianna, you can speak to this as a teacher. Um you're probably looking at three or four times that amount of money of what you see in there for outplacement. Because of the number of services, you need a full time O T, you need a full time physical therapist, you need a full time speech and language clinician. You need a full time B C B A, you need a full time school psychologist. Talon tried this, I believe, a few years ago. Um and that program has been eliminated because it was, the cost was just outrageous. They couldn't afford it anymore, they eliminated their program and now they just outplace students. So it's it's a really hard cost. We try and limit when we send someone out. But it's a team decision and it's it's, you know, we've we've exhausted those. Those resources to try and keep them in district. And I will tell you, this behavioral consultant is, again, I talked about this last time, is one of the most critical. Because the attorneys will ask, did that, what behaviors in in one of the issues? Did you consult, have a behavior consultant, how many hours were you providing? Um and how long do you do it for? The attorneys will ask you that. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Brianna, living in the trenches.
All true, I heard Herb was asking specifically about that behavioral consultant. And so I remember Marsha telling us that was part of an I E P, so that's legally binding. There's absolutely nothing that can be done, that we must provide that service. And I actually wish we could have that person all the time for all of the children. Because that's becoming the kind of person all schools need. Um and really, if the teachers and staff who are working with the student. Whose I E P requires the behavioral consultant are actually learning really valuable skills that they can apply themselves in other. Parts of their professional life, so it kind of does a little bit of training for our staff in some ways too, if you want to look at it like that. Or perhaps the teachers are building a new bag, putting some new things in their bag of tricks, so to speak. So that when they come across certain situations, they know what to do or other staff members can ask, have you had experience with this, what can we do? So those are just some kind of things I try to keep in mind when you have something in someone's I E P that is required. Um and I was thinking about our preschool program too, the way that that model is run. You have to have all of those kinds of people when you take on students from birth to three. And when you're going to do some early identification and early intervention. The sooner you can get to those students and give them the O T and P T, for example. The stronger they're going to be as they get older and the more prepared they'll be to be learners in our primary classrooms. So those were just a couple of things I was thinking of there.
Thanks, Brianna. Donna, I see your hand up.
Do you have any influence on whether the student should stay in house or be out?
Sure, I mean, it's a team decision. Um and there's a whole process that they go through. If a parent doesn't want it and the district does, there's a whole due process that you go through. And if it could be vice versa, it could be that the, you know, the district doesn't want it and the parent does, it just depends on the situation. But it turns out to be a team decision and if the team agrees, that's what is in the student's I E P. Um if the team does not agree, then that's where typically child advocates get involved or and attorneys get involved. Typically, you'll have, you know, some sort of come person come as a mediator and try and solve the problems. To to figure out the best solution for that child. And that's where you're placed, so. But yes, we have a, we have a seat at table, for sure.
So basically, you're saying that these students that are outplaced. We cannot service internally, we don't have the staff for that.
You are correct, you are correct.
Can I add that the goal is to provide intensive services for those students? With the hopes they'll be rejoining the public school system.
And we have, and we have. Yeah, which is rare in in a pre K through eighth grade, I I would say. But we have. Which is great.
We have three outs.
Correct, this budget has three students outplaced next year. It could be five, hopefully, you know, that's not the case, but as what we know today is what we're budgeting for, and that is three.
Donna, I see your hand up.
Yes, I've got several questions. One is, Phil, could you clarify the difference between tuition outplacement? And school choice special education? I understand what the outplacement is, but I'm not clear on the school choice special education.
So if someone takes advantage of the school choice possibility, they go to a magnet school. But they are identified with special education needs, the home district is required to pay that cost. And so that's what you see there.
Is it significantly more? To service them in that manner than if they were in our own, our school? And using the resources that they would need, or does it kind of even out?
It it balances out, I mean, we see all the billing and stuff, you know, that comes through. You know, but basically what happens is you're paying for the school choice first, which is the magnet school cost. Um or whatever the school choice is, then you're paying for, you know, if there's a, if this student has. The need for a paraprofessional, one to one, that cost is billed to the home district. If there's special education transportation that's needed, it's billed to the district. Um if there's occupational therapy or physical therapy, it's billed to the home district. And our pupil services director sits at those meetings, she has a voice in those P P Ts. But she is one voice of a team. And so, you know, they are obviously, we asked them to present data and back up why they're making those recommendations. And they have the ability to do that, so. But yes, that's that's school choice where special education is provided. Whereas the outplacement tuition is the entire team, Wellington team. Um that student was going to center or hall schools and that P P T that occurs. They've making that decision to to send this to student to an outplacement facility.
Right, my next question is, and and this may be premature because it's only February, happy February, everybody. Have you been notified of any teachers planning to retire the end of this school year?
None. We typically build it in if we do.
Okay, and and then the other thing, which I don't know if this really fits into to the budgeting. But I was having a conversation with with somebody. And they had noticed in this, in the students that they deal with, that um that there's been some. I'm gonna say developmental delays, maybe it's better labeled, um slower progress than expected. Because there's certain things, like let's face it, you know, you give your kids some milk at home, they don't learn how to open up a milk carton. Because the cartons that you have at home have the screw tops, the ones at school. You open those little tiny ones differently. So there's, and I'm sure that there are other things that fall into that category where. The the dexterity, the manipulations, things like that. If you're not, you don't necessarily encounter them outside of a school setting. And I was wondering if the teachers. And and the staff are just trying to pay attention to the things that aren't, that should be. So that there could be, you know, appropriate intervention, whether it's, you know, finger dexterity. And certain manipulations, if you're on a screen all the time, maybe you can't hold a pen or a pencil. And there's certain things that the kids need to learn. But because of the use of the technology. And and maybe, you know, the masks and the remotes and just the whole. Thing that that they're just not quite getting that they would under normal circumstances. So that things can be put in place to help compensate for that.
Yeah, one of our, it's really early intervention does this, but one of our things, especially with kindergarten screening. When our, when our students come in, we've actually had, I think we have a model process actually in place. We've had other districts come and visit our, watch our our kindergarten screening. They watch, they come in and they basically evaluate, do a quick snapshot of valuation of kids. And so one of the things they look at is pencil grip, playing with a friend, can you initiate communication? There's a whole list of things that they go through. And they're without their parents during the, during that time. And so it's a piece of the puzzle, it's not the only piece. And then during the school year, across the board, if there's a teacher, you know, it used to be art teachers. Used to notice like, hey, Phil's having a hard time with pencil grip in in class. Um and that's where we can try and provide some intervention support.
I believe there's background noise, okay, thank you.
Yep, so that's typically, you know, we try to evaluate it and it's almost always in the elementary school. Obviously, if it 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 does happen in the middle school, but not as often. Obviously, it doesn't matter where it happens, if we see something, you know, we're gonna, they have student assistance teams. Um in both schools that try to address those problems and and support students.
Brianna.
So early childhood education is my wheelhouse and the motor skills that you're talking about happen a lot. Down there when the students first get to us. I wanted to be an advocate for play in those classrooms. Because it's really important for fine and gross motor skills when kids are playing and doing things like screwing on a cap. In a dramatic play center or using their pincher fingers to try to get little bugs on a math game that you're using. So those things are really important and that's why. The gross motor skills in particular are necessary for full body movement later on in life. If you see children and they sort of walk around and they're not sure where their body is in space, like when they're young, those are the kinds of things we need to do to encourage them. With that, and then the fine motor skills, those those sort of things are what make our strong writers. And they are typing a lot and using their fingers and swiping screen spot. You're right, holding a pencil, holding a fork, spoon, knife. For me, putting on eyeliner, okay, you need fine motor skills to put on makeup. Maybe flossing, the for everybody, make it gender neutral. But yeah, those things are all really important, Donna, I'm actually glad that you said that because that brings light to the idea that. Maybe that's something to look at in the district grade, like across the whole entire district. The O T people are so important to have on consult, even if they're not working specifically with a child or with a classroom. You can always go to them and ask them for suggestions and ideas of things you can do in the classroom. P E is where you're gonna see a lot of the gross motor skills and at recess too, that's where you might notice that some children have deficits. And like Phil said, the art teachers will be the ones looking closely at those fine motor skills. So they're good people to give you some ideas of who needs a little bit of help and what particularly the issue is. And then you were saying the thing about. At home, Donna, they have different kinds of milk containers to open. I teach kindergarten, let me tell you about teaching kids to open milk cartons, okay? It's a process, you better have lots of paper towels ready all the time. And we have a full class celebration when they finally get their little finger in there and are able to pull it out, it's a big deal. We're making progress in my classroom. And that made me think too about how parent communication is so important. I know that when I was a new mom, I had no idea what my daughter was supposed to be able to do at that particular age. Or what she was capable of, because I was doing everything for her. And if I had stayed that way, she would be a fifteen year old who needs me for just about everything at this point. So unless you're a young parent who is able to have your children in school or be in groups of other kids with other parents. It's hard to know what they're capable of. Our early childhood program is N I A C accredited, one of the requirements is that we communicate with parents all the time about their children and their child development. And what kinds of things they should be able to do, like, for example, listing some chores, three year olds, four year olds, five year olds should be able to do. And that's a good way to give parents some kind of like touch point, so they know the kinds of things their children should be more independent in doing. And when we have those things like opening the milk cartons, we make sure to tell the moms and dads those things. So that they can expect those kind of independent activities to happen at home too. There was one other thing I wanted to say about those motor skills, they can happen anytime, not just in early childhood. I think you're right, there's lots of ways to identify kids with those needs. And to use the S R B I process to get them some assistance, or like I said, just talk to your O T and P T for consult. So if a staff member noticed a deficit in a child, I think they definitely need to immediately get upon that. And talk to the families and let them know some things that they can be doing at home too, to help, because you're right, it's very important.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, and and part of my concern is, you know, you're dealing with. Unless you're what what I'll call one of the special teachers, so if you're an art or a music or a P E teacher. Or may some sort of a support, you know, whether it's math or reading help. Lots of teachers, you you don't see the same student year after year after year. So I'm I'm thinking about the P E teacher, you know, he sees what they looked like when they were in pre K. And and sees them when they're in fourth grade. So getting a picture of has this kid progressed? Is really something that someone in that kind of position may be better able to assess. Then then the teacher that maybe sees them every day, but it's for a shorter season of their life. And it was just more of thinking of. With all the new curriculum and with life being as as life is right now. That those little things might be easy to fall through the cracks unless staff is reminded. To pay attention to those little things and and families too, you know, if there's things like Brianna, you mentioned. And, and families, too, you know, if there's things like Brianna, you mentioned. If there's, I remember when I showed up for kindergarten orientation, I was handed a packet of all the things my kid should know before they entered kindergarten, except that it was kindergarten orientation. It's a little late to tell me what they should know. And then you go back through the list and, you know, figure out, okay, you did a pretty decent job because most of the things on the list, you, you, you went over with your kid. But it's, you know, for, for the kid that's struggling in something or for the family that's really being pulled in multiple directions. They may not necess, sometimes you don't know what you don't know and, and that way. So I think pro, being proactive is really important for the school system. Like you mentioned the other week, that's that app. And I'm wondering if, if it's, you know, something like that. Maybe the library should be promoting that so that everybody in town, whether you're a parent or a grandparent or a childcare provider, if you take the kids to the library, you might be more aware of what's out there. The same with, with the lists of what's appropriate for different ages, you know. Get it out there so that when our kids walk in the door, they're hearing this positive encouraging stuff from more than one source. So it might take.
I'll tell you that, sorry, Michelle, so you're going to open your mouth, but I have to say this. Just to give you a sense of awareness, last Wednesday, this is exactly what you're talking about. Last Wednesday, we spent hours, how about all day long, adjusting a preschool room. Their room flooded and they can't use their room. They lost a bunch of their furniture and we had another classroom that was being used partially for storage and partially for Spanish. And we spent all day cleaning it and, and basically making it a new home for preschool students for, until the other room is fixed, with a purpose of making sure they have places for play, that they have, you know, opportunities for, for, for fine motor practice. And they had the, the things for dramatic play and any of the tools that they have in their typical classroom. We need to, to make sure, because it's, it could be a month. And a month is a long time. And so we made sure that their classroom was set up so they could be successful and have the practice they need. So it was a long day, but we got it done.
I just wanted to pull it back to the budget side of this. Phil, is there adequate funding in this budget to ensure that all of those needs are met? Or are there additional things that you didn't ask for that maybe need to be added?
There's no, I will tell you that I don't think there's any extra in this budget. Are the class sizes a, a, a smaller? Yes, and, and let me tell you, they filled the room when we've tried to do this before. Several times where we've tried to eliminate a position. They've, the parents have filled the room and said, no, we want this. The extra this year that's in the budget is, is that math position is a prime example of what we're talking about. We want to make this successful. This curriculum rollout needs to be successful. And we're taking, we've, we're on, we, we have an endeavor here that has never been done in Wellington that I know of. I mean, I've been here a long time. And there's, don't get me wrong, there's been professional development, but it's not to the extent of what we're doing right now. I read an article today about, it was the comment about letters training, what's going on in, I think it was Mississippi or Georgia. And they said, you know, it's great for them to do that, but if you don't provide the ongoing professional development and coaching and you just give them letters, it's not enough. What's the reason we're talking about a math coach? It's the reason why that literacy support is so important. I, I gave you a budget that is, there's not any fluff in there. It's, it's what we need to operate the district. Do I wish it was lower? Sure. Could I add more to, to, you know, make it grow? Absolutely, I could. But I, this is my balance between what I know, what I believe the town can afford and the needs that we have right now. We are, are trying to put things in place that will significantly impact test scores, number one. And number two, that'll impact students as, as a person. If you have to have that balance, that whole child approach is, is what we're going after. And so that's what this budget reflects. And so, yes, I think there's supply money in there that's adequate. I think the, the positions are adequate. I think the professional development funds are adequate. I'm glad insurance was a zero this year because if that was an increase, too, it could have been a big killer. So that was a successful negotiation for us. So yes.
Laura and Ann, we haven't heard from you tonight. I want to give you a chance to have the floor if you have a question or a comment that you want to make. Go ahead, Laura.
I, I didn't really have any questions. I think maybe my one comment that I was thinking of was, was, or the discussion around curriculum development and the importance of the professional development for that. I was a teacher for a very long time. I've been through a lot of professional development that was not directly related to what I was teaching. And the, the instructional strategies have really changed over the years. And I think, you know, curriculum is not just a written document. It is everything that happens in the classroom, from standards to what's written in the curriculum. And having professional development to understand how to implement that curriculum is so incredibly important. I think Erin spoke to that very well. So, you know, my one comment, I guess, was just support of that piece that I think is just really, really important, you know, because you can have a written document, it could be amazing. But if nobody knows how to implement that well in the classroom with that particular group of students, it's, it's not worth the paper it's written on. So the professional development is just really, really critical. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thanks, Ann.
Michelle, I have to leave. Sorry.
I'll come, I'll come back around to you. I'm recognizing Ann right now.
As a member of the curriculum committee, we've been able to see everything that Erin and the teachers are doing. And I believe that she'll be coming soon to share that with the entire board so that everyone on the, on the board will have a chance to see the hard work that's been done. I also think that the curriculum is also collaborative so that they're working with the teachers, the teachers are helping them develop the curriculum, they're revising the curriculum there. It's, as, as Laura said, it's a living document that needs a lot of reflection, a lot of collaboration with teachers working together. And this goes back to those days where we need to provide the teachers the time to number one, receive the training through professional development and then to reflect on how it's working in the classroom, what needs to be changed and to kind of work together to, to really perfect it. So I think this is a great budget, which is leading us in that direction. I also think that this is where we're going to see the achievement increase. You know, we're looking at all the subject areas and, and, you know, using the state-of-the-art strategies and pedagogy's and, you know, so that hopefully this will lead to some really good achievement growth in our students. But we, it's an investment. And I think not only are we investing the, you know, the, the money in our budget, but we're also needing to invest the time that we're giving the teachers and, and Erin and the coaches to work together.
Thanks, Ann. Okay. I think I might have misunderstood Herb. I had thought he was asking to comment and then he left. So he might have been saying that he had to sign off. He's not in the waiting room, is what he was saying.
Yeah, I think he was saying.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood that. I apologize, Herb. I would recognize you now had you been on the call, but, okay. If there are no, Brianna? Oh, that, okay, sorry. If there are no further questions, oh, I just saw a hand up. Hang on. Go ahead, Laura.
Laura, and I have one more comment, and I think this is actually important to the budget. Because we, you know, we, we want to have the, the best education for our children for the money that our taxpayers have to pay, right? And as, you know, Phil was saying, there's, there's no fluff. A 3% increase.
It's her. She froze.
Yep. Okay. We'll see if she comes back in a second, and if not, she might disappear the way her, oh.
Am I still there?
Yes, we can hear you, even if you're, you're frozen. You were saying about.
Okay, yeah, and I think it's my internet connection, too, because I, it was kind of going in and out. I'll try to be quick. I'll try to be.
We can see you moving now. You're good.
Okay, all right. So there's been a question as far as the per pupil cost for Wellington and that I think the implication was that we're kind of high. And we were compared to another district in Arder, Coventry. And the, the latest per pupil, we were at 19,000, 959 Coventry at 16,544. So yes, it looks like, you know, we're, we're substantially higher. But one of the things you need to look at in that per pupil cost are the needs of our students and the different services that our students require, such as the outplacements. So I just took a quick look. And if we look at some of the students that need other services, that cost, we have two times the number of English language learners than Coventry. We have 1.5 times the number of students that are on free and reduced lunch, 1.4 times the students with disabilities. And we have a quarter of the number of students enrolled. And that's, that's actually a really huge piece. 398 students compared to 1,606. You still have to have your buildings and maintain your buildings and have heating costs and all that. And yet, you know, a quarter of the students in those buildings. So I, I did want to just mention, when you look at per pupil cost, you have to look at the makeup of the district and the physical resources and the number of students. If you're a smaller district, you're going to have a higher per pupil cost just because it takes more money. Or there's less students in those buildings that, that you're maintaining and running. So just my last comment there.
Thanks, Laura. That's an important comment. It's also important to note that you'll also see more significant swings, plus and minus, or, you know, in terms of percentage increases over time. Some years it's not especially good and some years it's, it's, it's better. But I think that, that is one of the problems with having a small-sized district.
I will, can I just add that I didn't put Mansfield in, but their per pupil is more expensive every single of the three years. Them often.
Thank you. Okay, so I believe that our presentation is finished. We have the materials. We have time to think about them. We will have a conversation next week at our regular board meeting.
Are we going to meet at 6:00 PM?
So that was the question, is do we need to have further discussions? Or are people satisfied with where we are that we do not need to have in-depth discussions about any one particular line or another?
Do we need to have the final number for the meeting at 7:00?
We can have that final number in the meeting at 7:00. We don't have to have decided it ahead of time. Is that correct, Phil? It's on our agenda.
Right, as long as.
So for example, right, so for example, we had that one $1,200 adjustment, but we don't have the exact number. We need to have the final exact number by the end of the meeting next week. But we do not need to meet an hour ahead to adjust one number.
I'll send that to you in advance because it's just the things I know already.
Okay, seeing no strong need to meet at 6:00 o'clock, we will have our regular start time at 7:00. Okay, with that, I move to adjourn our meeting. It is, according to the clock behind, Brianna, it is 7:50. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Donna. Okay, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously and we are adjourned. Okay, thank you all. I appreciate your time.